Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular council meeting for the city of Utica Tuesday, October 14th, 2025. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Mary Rinkie, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Deputy Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Faith Torenzi?
Here.
O'Donnell?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Bacchus?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Devrent?
Here.
Mayor Calendino?
Here.
All present. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. Does anyone have anything they would like to address council for? This is for items that are on the agenda. You have three minutes.
I'm thinking it's the cement?
Step right up and give us your name and address.
Thank you for putting me on the spot. Ken Rinkie, I live at 45666 Cass Avenue and just made aware today that they're looking, a company was looking at purchasing or renting the property at the 22 acres or whatever it is that's currently unused for a potential cement crushing facility. I know the ones that I've seen, just they're noisy, they're loud, they make a lot of dust. And I know just from our being on Cass, the amount of traffic, just since Amazon and all that, you just feel a house's shake just from the weight. And if we start running those big trucks up and down those streets, in my opinion, if that's allowed, it's going to make it worse. And then there's a lot of nice, if you go just past the entrance to that, there's that really nice subdivision, all those beautiful new homes. If they're going up and down that driveway, I'm sure they're not going to approve that either, but I just thought I'd bring that up to everybody because that's going to bring a lot of heavy trucks, not only bringing the large concrete pieces in, but also after being crushed, they're going to be carrying it out for use. So that's my biggest concern with that one. Is there anything? Wait a minute. You got to give your name and your address.
Mary Rinkie, 45666 Cass Avenue, wife, okay? It's already noisy on Cass on my front porch, okay? That part of Chapperton going down and where all that 22 acres is, no. It's going to be too noisy, too much dust, too much traffic with trucks and whatnot. And if that goes through, we're moving.
And not to mention, there's also the high school and elementary school. Depending on which way they come in, they're going to have to be coming right by all that. And if that's not allowed, they're going to be coming right up Cass, I would assume.
That's it? No.
Perfect, thank you.
Good?
Thank you.
Perfect. All right, as there's no one else from the public, we will close public comments. I'd be looking for a motion to approve all items and consent.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Deion, support by Torenzi, any discussion? No. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries, thank you, everyone. There's no unfinished business, no correspondence onto new business. In your packet, you will see, actually, the petitioner for item Roman numeral 5A withdrew their request. So that item is no longer needed. Next on the agenda is the appointment of Ms. Samantha Boita to Parks and Rec Commission. She's come to several meetings. I met with her, she's got a lot of energy. Our Parks and Rec is languishing a little bit. We lost our chairperson who resigned their position, but stayed on Parks and Rec, but no longer wants to be the chairperson. So we're looking to kind of reboot Parks and Rec right now. I think Samantha will be a great choice. She's got a lot of energy and she seems very excited and engaged. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve the appointment of Ms. Samantha Boita to Parks and Rec Commission.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Weaver, support by O'Donnell, any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries, thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is the packing plant letter of intention. As our friends and neighbors, the Rinkies mentioned, there's an interested party, Zenenga Cement Construction. They own a cement construction company, they have some interest in starting operations at our 22 acres off of Chapperton Street. The property is listed for $450,000 and they offered under that amount, $375,000. I know we've talked a lot about revisiting our downtown and what purpose that property could serve. I concur with the Rinkies, that is not a great fit. This is our last parcel of undeveloped land in the city. I think we need to be patient and deliberate about making any decisions for that parcel and allowing a cement construction company really is not going to transform that area the way I envision it and I believe the way most of us on council feel as well. Also, they offered less than the list price, so not sure how serious they are about their offer anyways. So if they're, let's get a motion on the floor. I will make a motion or...
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to refuse the letter of intent offered by the company that, I'm sorry.
In fact, clarify that, it was actually not a letter of intent that they offered, they actually submitted a purchase agreement.
Okay.
The date of which has expired, both when it was supposed to be responded to and when it was supposed to be closed by, so it's questionable whether that's even in effect anymore.
Do you want to do it just to tighten things up?
I think...
Yeah, I would do the motion regardless.
So I will make a motion to refuse their letter, I'm sorry, their offer to purchase the packing plant property.
Motion by Deion.
Support.
Support by Torenzi, and we are open for deliberation. Is there anyone that has any comments?
No, I fully agree with the Rinkies and just about everyone else that would be, you know, in our little town on the west side of Van Dyke would be miserable to live, you know, it's, I lived through the packing plant property years, I don't know if anyone else has actually been. I lived in Lincoln Meadows immediately adjacent to that parcel. So, and I went to junior high at Epler and I can smell the pigs and I can only imagine the trucks, the dust, everything else that was bringing me back to my childhood, which I would prefer not to. So I'm in strong support of not having such a business next to our schools, our fine residential areas and our neighbors.
Yep, and that's definitely an important aspect of it. To me, equally important is, this is really our last contiguous large parcel in the city of Utica, and I think we just have to be real careful and real smart about what we do with it and make sure that we're not regretting a decision 25 years from now or our grandkids 50 years from now about, you know, being impatient and taking the first offer that we get.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to speak on it also.
Absolutely.
I'm definitely against it. I'm in that business, concrete business, and I know, I've been to several crushing plants. They're very loud, very dusty, not only that, but they bring all the dust out of the driveway onto the roads. I mean, they're continuously cleaning their driveways and roads just to keep the dust down. So I don't think it'd be a great fit for us at all.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Except that I agree with everything everybody says, and mainly, I'm thinking about our residents. I, you know, I feel that, I'm glad that you're here, not too many others are here, but it would be a detriment to them if that'd be good. You don't build good neighbors that way.
No. Councilman Devrent?
Yeah, thank you for bringing your concerns. I agree with everything that's been said so far and, so I want to stress more on the side of, you know, the future of Utica. I think the use of that property is critical to how this city is going to evolve in the future. I'd like Utica to be a destination and a concrete crushing plant is not really going to be attractive for that, so that's how I stand.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? And the motion on the floor is to deny the request. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries, thank you, everyone. There's no unfinished business, no correspondence onto new business. In your packet, you will see, actually, the petitioner for item Roman numeral 5A withdrew their request. So that item is no longer needed. Next on the agenda is the appointment of Ms. Samantha Boyda to Parks and Rec Commission. She's come to several meetings. I met with her, she's got a lot of energy. Our Parks and Rec is languishing a little bit. We lost our chairperson who resigned their position, but stayed on, stayed on Parks and Rec, but no longer wants to be the chairperson. So we're looking to kind of reboot Parks and Rec right now. I think Samantha will be a great choice, she's got a lot of energy and she seems very excited and engaged. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve the appointment of Ms. Samantha Boyda to Parks and Rec Commission.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Weaver, support by O'Donnell, any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries, thank you, everyone. Department reports, just wanted to say thank you to our DPW, our police and our fire for really pulling off an incredible nightmare in Auburn Festival. I didn't hear of any incidents, a lot of smiling faces. I've never seen, during the trick or treat two hours, I've never seen downtown packed so much. I mean, there were, it was actually hard to walk through downtown, so. Also, Connect McComb did a great job organizing it, it wouldn't have been possible without their assistance. So in all, just a really super event. Does anyone on council have anything to report tonight?
Yes, sir. So I'd like to hear, congratulate the mayor and members of the community on being able to have our pickleball courts installed and the ribbon cutting last week provided by Jars Cannabis. They've, again, did what they said they were going to do in the community, as a lot of people don't prefer to have donations from these businesses. However, they've turned out to be very beneficial to the city as far as being good neighbors, good business partners in the city, and good community advocates here. They are spending, how much was the pickleball courts?
Well over $100,000.
Well over $100,000 investment that didn't cost the taxpayers anything, except for having a business in the city, which you can choose or choose, you know, choose or not choose to patronize. Nevertheless, they've been great, and so congratulations to the mayor and hard work. I know how hard you worked on that, I talked to the mayor every couple of days on that, and he really, you know, when the other companies wavered and didn't want to do their parts, our mayor, who's very strong-headed and Sicilian, won't forget it, he went ahead and pushed forward and made sure that they did exactly what they said they were going to do with a little nudging along the way, right?
A little bit.
But so, it turned out amazing, they look great, and they're chitin orange and black, which looks also great matching our basketball court, so congratulations to Mr. Mayor, great work. And also, congratulations on the nightmare in Auburn, exceptionally well attended. I had the chance to go down there and see things myself, and it was phenomenal. Great work.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on council? All right, nothing from planning or assessing tonight. Mr. Hicks, anything from building?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight. And Ms. Francis from library is excused. Chief Fullsec, or I'm sorry, Assistant Chief Plant, have it for me.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mayor and council, in your packet, you have a few items to address this evening. The first of which is a FEMA AFG acceptance request. This is a FEMA grant that our captain, Brian Olowski, has been working on diligently over the last several months. The grant amount is $72,100 for all-new four-inch supply hose. That is the entire, the entire supply for every truck we own plus reserve hose to be replaced with brand-new hose. Again, $72,100. In addition to that, the grant would include the purchase of a turnout gear dryer. As you're aware, these firefighters are put into situations where they're very toxic gases and materials. We did, under a grant in previous years, get a extractor. We now have the turnout gear dryer covered by this grant if accepted, so much encouraged us to do that, that's a new piece of equipment for us. FEMA's award amount is $68,670. There is a city match of $3,430 for a total combined amount of $72,100. At this time, I'd be requesting council pass a motion to allow the fire department to accept the FEMA grant EMW-2024-FG02432.
So moved.
Motion by Deion?
Support.
Support by Weaver, any discussion?
Is this cheaper than just doing it ourselves? I mean, can our guys hang up lights?
It's a full package deal, though. It's putting up lights and then taking them down and then storing them.
They store them all year.
Gotcha, so they're not our lights?
They're our property. They store them for us.
Gotcha. I'm not against it, I'm just, you know.
I agree, I think our guys are exceptionally well, everything they do, they're top-notch and they're talented, but they have so much on their plate right now in this city.
That's not what they need to be doing.
We serve so much in such a small space, these guys just have their hands already too busy doing other meaningful tasks.
And until we had the new, got the new boom truck, I for one would, yeah, the, we do have the new boom truck, which would maybe assist them in doing it.
We still put up the wreaths.
Gotcha.
These are, we store those, but it does make it a lot easier to have a company come in and do it. Plus, if there's anything wrong with them, they come out and they swap them out, so I think, I think as a city, we own...
The mic.
As a city, we own so many strings of lights and they replace them as, as needed, so. And they did come out a couple of times last year to replace them, so.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mayor.
No problem. Any further discussion? And we did have a second on that, right?
Correct, yes.
Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries, and your second motion.
Part, part two, I would ask a motion be made and accepted to allow the fire department to move forward with accepting bids for four-inch supply hose and the turnout gear dryer.
So moved.
Motion by Weaver?
Support.
Support by Torenzi, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Uh...
Madam Deputy Clerk?
Thank you. Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
Yes, motion carries. And your next item, Assistant Chief? Thank you. Next item, AIS in your packet should be the Utica Fire Grant Amendment for Motorola radio purchase. The initial quote that was accepted and approved by council in the amount of $299,938.86 on September 9th of this year was updated to use the full amount of the grant awarded. A new updated quote brought the total to $300,081.6 using the full amount of the grant and adding a few extra batteries to our order. The fire department needs to move $90 from the equipment purchase line item 101-336-981000 to radio equipment line item 101-336-982LEOF25 to cover the updated amount of the quote. At this point, I'd be looking to have a motion passed to accept the new quote in the amount of $300,081.6.
So moved.
Motion by Deion?
Support.
Support by Torenzi, any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. In support of that, we'd be seeking to amend the fiscal year 2026 general fund fire department budget, transferring $90 from equipment purchase line item 101-336-981000 to radio equipment 101-336-982LEOF25.
So moved.
Motion by Deion?
Support.
Support by Bacchus, any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you all. The next item we have is fire inspector software. This software is for the Mobile Eyes software. It's a service plan used for fire inspections that is required and renews every year. The cost of renewal is $2,983.14. At this time, we'd be looking to, for mayor and council to approve and to pay the continued service plan with Mobile Eyes in the amount of $2,983.14 from GL101-336-73101.
So moved.
Motion by Torenzi?
Support.
Support by Weaver, any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries. And Assistant Chief, I think we skipped over the Stryker maintenance agreement.
Okay, I had, I think we went back and forth on the list. I do have it here, that's the last one I have, sir.
Oh.
Again, the Stryker maintenance agreement, this is a three-year service agreement for Stryker. It is to provide any repairs and maintenance to the stretchers, auto loads, Lucas devices, and Life Pack monitors. This is the first year payment of three years in the amount of $18,468.80. There is a need to amend the budget. The fire department is requesting to move $1,000 from the ambulance equipment 101-651-931000 to equipment repair and maintenance 101-651-931000 to cover the increase. This is renewal to the equipment and warranty that was all purchased under the FEMA grant that was awarded. Due to rising costs, the maintenance agreement has increased by $468.80 for this three-year service. The suggested action is to move $1,000 from ambulance equipment line item 101-651-981000 to equipment repair and maintenance 101-651-931000.
So moved.
Motion by Torenzi?
Support.
Support by Deion, any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, now to pay for it. Motion to approve a year-one payment of a three-year service contract with Stryker in the amount of $18,468.80 from equipment repair and maintenance line item 101-651-931000.
So moved.
Support.
I have a legal question. Have we already approved that contract, or are we just approving the payment on a contract that was already approved, or are we approving the contract too?
We have, I don't know the answer to the contract moving forward, this is a contract we have paid in the past, so I, again, this isn't something I'm involved in, I don't know if we've signed the contract yet, I suspect we have not.
Okay.
Can we make a motion to include contractual signing on the mayor's behalf?
Well, it should be legal review and authorizing the mayor to execute.
Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize the amount that the assistant fire chief noted in his dissertation and also agree to have the mayor review and accept, should he find it acceptable under legal review for the contract, for Stryker.
Motion by Deion?
Support.
Support by Torenzi, any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to report tonight?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Chief Kaluzdine?
Good evening, mayor and council. Including your packet is an agenda item summary for Motorola Dispatch Council. This goes back to 2020 when this, this project started. I'm happy to report, we're finally complete and done with this project. So the, the tower's complete, it's running, and we are operating on the new Motorola Dispatch councils. In preparing my budget for this year, I did not anticipate that this project was going to run into this current fiscal year, so the money was, was not brought forward. So what I'm asking for is to bring forward the money that we've already received on this project. It's, it's been sitting in a designated account. Bring that money forward so I can make the final payment to Motorola. We've kind of been holding off on that last payment until the project was fully complete. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve, to approve a budget amendment to the police fiscal year '26 budget in the amount of $42,680. That's the GL101-301-981-000-L71020, that's equipment purchase, for the purpose of completing payment for the Dispatch Council project.
So moved.
Motion by Torenzi?
Support.
Support by Bacchus, any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Bacchus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
And my second motion is to approve payment to Motorola for the amount of $42,676.90.
So moved.
Motion by Torenzi?
Support.
Support by Bacchus, any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Bacchus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you for that. Just wanted to give council and the public just a little update. We had completed our traffic enforcement period. So every year, the, the state of Michigan and its passed-down funds through the federal government conducts traffic enforcements, and you hear them, the click it or ticket, red lights, enforcement, OWI enforcement, stuff like that. So this, last year, our officers completed two-hundred-and-twenty-nine extra hours of enforcement. So this is money that we receive through the state of Michigan, through the federal government. It's not taxpayer money. It covers the officers' wages, overtime, their, their fringe benefits and stuff. So that's putting extra officers on the road. So we, we had two-hundred-and-twenty-nine extra hours of enforcement out on our roads. Our officers completed four-hundred-and-sixty-four traffic stops onto there. And one of the interesting statistics I pulled, they, they issued one-hundred-and-eleven distracted driving tickets off of there. So anybody that's driven down Hall Road or any of our streets, I'm sure I've seen plenty of people on, on their phones doing stuff. So really nice to see our guys out there making a difference and, and at least, you know, cracking down on the enforcement. Moving forward into this fiscal year 26, we received nineteen thousand dollars from the state of Michigan through the, through the county to conduct these enforcements moving forward into this year. So it works out to be about a little over three-hundred hours of extra enforcement that our officers are going to get. So this year's mandatory enforcement, so what the state does is, is they create certain weeks or months to conduct these enforcements and then to focus on, on certain things. Coming up, we have state pedestrian enforcement, so looking for pedestrians walking in, in the walkway, vehicles, you know, not yielding to pedestrians. Safe stop, school bus safety, so when you have your, your buses letting the children out, people driving around the, the buses when they're supposed to be stopping. Our OWI impaired driving enforcement, distracted driving, our seatbelt, the click it or ticket, speed enforcement, so officers will be out there additionally just looking for speeders on, on the road. Bicycle safety enforcement, we got a lot of trails to the city here. And then concluding with national OWI enforcement going into your, your summer months, you know, August into Labor Day, kind of your, your high ports there. So just wanted to give you a little update of, of some of the things that our officers have done and moving forward. And, you know, this is all grant funding, this is all zero cost to the residents, and it's extra officers out there on the road.
Thank you, chief.
Yep, that's great.
And thank you to your staff, you know, the police.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Sue Diamond.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I've got a couple agenda items. The first one is a budget amendment for our seasonal employees. Our seasonal employees, I had budgeted for in Parks and Streets Department. The Street Department has a higher, higher level of activity, so I'm just making the adjustments to adequately support streets labors from, funding from the parks. And these are all both from seasonal employees. So I'm looking for motions from city council to approve amending fiscal year 26 budget by decreasing Park Seasonal Employees, one oh one, seven five one, seven zero three, zero zero zero, in the amount of six-hundred-and-twenty dollars and increasing Street Seasonal Employees, one oh one, four four one, seven zero three, zero zero zero, in the amount of six-hundred-and-twenty dollars.
Support.
So moved. Oh, he said so moved.
I'm sorry. So moved.
Support.
Motion by Weaver, support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Bacchus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. The second one is our project for road pavement joint and crack ceiling project. Routine, routine maintenance is essential for the preservation of and longevity of Van Dyke Avenue and Utica Road within the city limits. In fiscal year 26 budget, it was recommended and approved to, to perform joint and crack ceiling on these major roads to achieve this goal. A request for proposal was issued on mitten resulting in two proposals from Michigan Joint Ceiling and Schottler Construction. As you saw in your packet, Michigan Joint Ceiling had, was, was the lowest bid, and they have been doing a bunch of the cities around here. They just finished up with Shelby, they've done work in Clinton Township. It's a great company, and I'm glad that they came in because they know what they're doing. Not that I, the other company doesn't, but I know this company and I know other cities use them a lot, and they, they have bid on multiple projects. So, and HRC was expecting about fifty thousand dollars for this project. That came in at fifty-one thousand, so they're pretty, they're, they're pretty on par for it. I did put a contingency of ten percent on their fee just to make sure if we had any issues during the project. So looking for motion from city council to accept and approve the bid for Michigan Joint Ceiling in the amount not to exceed fifty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars, which includes the bid and a ten percent contingency fee, fee.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Terrencey, support by Deion. Any discussion?
I just want to ask, this is, this has been, they inspected this, these streets, right? This is, okay, so it's not just a ballpark that's going to have to be adjusted later?
No, no, yeah, they, they were told they had to go in, and they did it by, we did it by pound instead of length of them, how much their actually product is going to be used. So yes, they had to go out and check the street. So we'll be doing Van Dyke from north of M-59 to the city, city limits, and Utica from Dobree or the expressway or M-59 to the city limits, so.
How long will that take?
It sounds like it would take them about three weeks to finish, so.
So Utica Road will be closed, then?
No, no, they would, they would, they have to do it in sections, so we'll have probably one lane, you know, one, a passing lane for, so we'd have openings for both routes. So and, and construction barrels and everything, that's all included in the project, so.
Okay.
We're going to want to, when this gets underway, we're going to want, want to let St. Lawrence know about that.
Oh, absolutely. And I, they already have been, I believe I sent an email to Jeff on this before, so, yep. We, once, once we sit down, we haven't even had the pre-con, so once, once they come in, they're going to want to get in and get out anyways before the cold weather comes, so.
Any further discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Bacchus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Finally, been pushing for this for how long, Brad?
At least as long as, I mean.
As long as you and I have been at council.
Which is like ten years, then, almost? I mean, seriously.
Yes, you and I have.
Yeah, I mean, long time. Maybe not ten. It definitely will help out, for sure, so.
Anything else to, or, yeah, anything else to report tonight?
Just a couple on our, on our projects going on. Our service line replacements, we have had eighty-nine completed. We are waiting six more to schedule, and we have twenty-four that have not responded to multiple notices, phone calls, letters, door hangers. So trying to figure out some other way to get these twenty-four people to respond to either DPW or to HRC so we can get them on the schedule to get these replaced. We're not the only city that are having these issues. Other cities are having similar issues, and we've been following the steps that they have been doing by sending notices going door to door, hoping to get someone when we knock. So knocking wood, we'll try to get these last twenty-four done within the end of the year. Service line verifications, we are just waiting the final documents from ML Chartier, which was, they needed to add us to their insurance for liability. They, once they get in, they, once we get them their addresses, which are about, I believe there's a hundred and sixty of them, they can start a week later, and they plan on being in and out in three weeks. And that's just verifying that, at the curb stop, whether it's copper, galvanized, or lead. And what they are, you know, whatever the results file, they'll either go to the replacements if it's found to be lead or galvanized, or they'll just, they'll, will be noted as copper. Pioneer Park Pavilion, we are still waiting on the correct gutters to be delivered. There are the gutters on there right now, but the correct ones are waiting to be delivered and installed. Our lead and copper sampling was done in July. We were required to do twenty samples, which are pretty, pretty much the same exact samples we have been carrying out through the last five or six years. And we had one that came back in exceedance of the new lead standard, which is now at twelve parts per billion. Last year, it was ten parts per billion. Next year, it's supposed to be fifteen parts per billion. That, all residents, all addresses were sent letters with their results. The one that had the lead is a copper service line, so it's something inside their house, probably faucets or interior piping. We will be going out there doing another inspection, and we're going to resample and send it out just to confirm. But again, it is, it is a copper service line. And all reports have been sent to Eagle for compliance. Our sewer lining project is back up. I'm sure you've seen it around. We had that extra seventy-four thousand dollars that wasn't spent the first go-around in the grant that we received. So DVM has been out and did five additional segments throughout the city. Ketting, Sterrett, Brownell, and Auburn, I believe we have two more, and then that'll expunge that, that funding. So those are always great to have, it was, it was great that we added these last, I think, seven segments. They were part of the original inspections. They weren't on that, that, that number five, which was the worst rating you can get. They were down to four. We, we lined all the number fives and a lot of the number fours, so now we're kind of just making our way down. And hopefully, we can get funding to maybe complete the, the last couple fours and threes that we have moving forward. Iron Bell Bridge, been meeting bi-weekly with the mayor and the treasurer. HRC and contact engineering are continuing to gathering all the required info that Eagle needs for the bridge ports and for that permit. The permit was sent in, now we're just, it's basically a back and forth with Eagle. We probably won't see any really movement in that till next spring, maybe summer, depending on how all our permits go and when MDOT gets involved. The PRV, all the materials have been delivered. We have them in shop. Now we're just waiting to get it on the schedule for the replacements on Auburn Road there. And Van Dyke and Han Crosswalks, that was originally supposed to go out for bid, but there's a possibility that we might be able to get a safety grant, an MDOT safety grant on that, which would be nice. We did budget for this project in fiscal year 26, but hoping to get a little money towards it, if not to pay the whole thing. So that's kind of been on pause until we figure out how this grant works. They are looking for more of a shovel-ready, and depending on how we can say that is shovel-ready, we might have a possibility looking into that. The only, the only other thing is that we did have, the hydrant flushing started this, this past week. We have had a couple residents call stating that their water is a little rusty or brown. That does happen. Your water is still good, there, there, you can just flush it until it turns clear, but there's no contaminants in it. It's just from the water, from the hydrants not being used. I have been notifying dispatch to let them know what streets are on or what area, they do have an area map of where we're at. So when those calls come in, they can promptly give them answers. We did get a couple in City Hall, and I believe dispatch might have got one or two as well. And then the mayor didn't mention, but the Art Nook is completed, and the ribbon ceremony is tomorrow at three thirty?
Yep.
Okay. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diamond. Nothing from the treasurer tonight. Madam Deputy Clerk, a report from city administration.
Mayor and council, I am asking to, I believe, amend our ordinance. Hopefully, I'm using the right words here. I take care of all of the water bills here in the city of Utica. I help with all the billing, and I help with all the payments. Right now, it's getting a little confusing when we load the readings in. If the due date is after the reading, then it's showing a balance forward, and the residents are getting confused that they don't think their payment went through, or that, that their payment was lost, or, you know, not applied to their account. So I am asking for our due date to be changed to the fourteenth of every month, which would not be, it would be way before the readings of the meter would take place. So I am looking for a motion to adopt an amendment to the Code of Ordinance for the city of Utica, Chapter eighty-two Utilities, Section eighty-two through thirty-five, changing the due date for payment of water bills and to provide the repealer and severability and effective date.
So really, you're looking for a motion to adopt the following ordinance and amendment